You ready in there?
Yep.
April ninth, town board work session. All members here except for Mr. Wehren.
Okay. Everyone had the reason for the work session?
The word.
And we're told that KPE is no discussion, that that matter at the moment is neutral?
Yes, status quo.
Okay. I've got the Carlson property that I want to discuss. Somebody else might want to also. So should I go to that, or do you have anybody else have anything?
Not yet.
No? Okay. Attorneys come up here a minute, please, on the Carlson property. And I've had discussions with Matt and Marty. Apparently, the last time we were in court, Carlson pleaded guilty to four counts of property maintenance.
Yes.
Okay. These are your notes. And he got a conditional discharge entered into where he agreed to file site plan application within ninety days.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm told that he can't file a site plan application because the activity is not a permitted use within that zone. So he can't file a site plan. They can't accept it. Is that...am I right here, Frank?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then he has to attend all approvals from the town, I don't know what that means, within eight months. One of the things these fellows told me is that he has applied for a change of zone.
Yes.
I've done my research. Even if the change of a zone were approved, he still can't do the composting and the grinding because that's not a permitted use in any zone.
Yes.
Okay. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's the dilemma. Now, this came to our attention, I believe, because of odors. People said they were getting sick, or they allege that. And the odors still persist. So is there another way to attack this from enforcement or code point of view?
Well, that's right. If we're going to get into that, I would recommend we go into executive session.
Okay. If you have a...you might have a call. Well, what if we left it that the town attorney's office take a look at another method of enforcement? And then the next time we meet, talk about that? Because I...can you do it off the top of your head? I hope not.
I could.
Okay. And well, if that's your ruling, is it has to go into executive session?
Yes.
I can ask one question. Basically, the conditional discharge is flawed by what supervisor just said. So can you amend your conditional discharge?
Well, at this point, we can't amend this conditional discharge, but it's important to remember, and again, I want to just toe that line before it's necessary to go into executive session, that at any time, the town is free to pursue any and all remedies it has under law as against Carlson Associates once again, if it so desires.
Okay.
Okay. So just let me be clear. He applied, which has been postponed. He applies for heavy industry zoning. Let's assume that's approved. He still is not able to do the mulching, which generates this odor, which people alleging makes them sick.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes.
So if those activities are still happening, then he needs to be re-summoned.
Oh, once again, now as we're starting to...
Well, Matt had told me earlier during the week that if he...there's a course of action to pursue, that must be executive session. And I take the matter as word.
Well, he was fined a thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
For failure to file a site plan.
No. Fine for property maintenance. These are Marty's notes.
Those were counts, but those were amended charges to property maintenance. Those were amended out of the zoning violations. Actually...
The original zoning violation was?
They were three twenty-two ninety-three, which was failure to obtain site plan approval. Just kind of catch-all zoning violation. It's important to note that as the conditional discharge is written, and the four counts of property maintenance that the defendant did plead guilty to, it's...again, I don't want to go too far, but what I want to say is that had these been the three twenty-two ninety-three violations, those would have been five hundred dollars a pop. Should the defendant have to be resentenced at a later date for failure to follow or abide by the conditions of this conditional discharge? That would be twenty-five hundred dollars per count, less the thousand dollars already paid, which could be ten thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars in the resentencing.
But he...and he can't meet those conditions as per town code, so we're in general quandary right now.
He apparently can't meet them because he's been trying to get a site plan for about thirty years.
Are you not discussing this, or do you rather be in executive session?
Well, we're...
We're getting close.
Yes.
Okay.
He could get a site plan for, I don't know, for taking in logs and, I don't know, something...this stupid analogy. Doing some other endeavor that doesn't relate to the total prohibited use of the property, which is the composting.
Yes, could he? Yes.
Yeah.
So that's what he needs to be filing for. He still needs to legalize his property.
And is he currently composting now?
Yes, he is. Of course, I spoke to Scully. Scully wasn't investigated there. He told me he had been there.
And he is currently composting.
Yeah.
My understanding that he was not.
He's got windrows of chipped...I don't know what the word is, of material that's lined up. Scully said that the public safety order monitor it for combustion because it could be spontaneous combustion. Spoke to Valentine, the rows are at the proper height, and they are at the proper distance from each other. So that was the DEC's word on that. But the only way, it seems to be the only way that he can legalize the use is you...town has to change its code. Because it's not permitted in any kind of zoning, heavy industry, light industry, whatever.
He needs to stop the illegal use to come in for a site plan for what the property's allowed on, to comply with that order in the court.
Just let us know when you need executive session, okay?
Yeah.
Before taking it to the fine lines. Okay?
Okay.
I think it should be executive session.
So we'll just put that off for executive session.
Uh, Mr. Silver, by?
No, he can't speak. I'm sorry, mister. It's not permitted.
What are you talking about, my client?
Well, it's all right. It's still an executive work set. It's in a session of a work session, which people can attend, but they can't address the board. Sorry. That has been the rule. Is that right?
Two o'clock, you can.
Yeah. Okay. You want your notes back? The other issue was... Hoppug Industrial Park. You drew a code amendment for the Hoppug Industrial, Frank?
Yes, I did.
For overlay districts?
Yes.
It was sent to the town attorney's office. I don't know why and how. But why isn't it in the town attorney's office? For the overlay district, it's the industrial park.
It's proposed legislation.
Proposed legislation.
Yeah.
And what is he reviewing?
He's reviewing the ordinance.
How long is you...how long is that going to take? And we're talking about development and property development in an industrial zone. Why aren't we moving on this?
I don't know the timing of it, but I can see Fred Calendrino is here if he'd like to speak about it. Fred, come on in. He's actually the one that's working on it.
How do you see it?
Fred's right there. He's inside the window there.
How do you see him?
I can see through the window. You actually vision. We won't bite. Come on, Fred.
Boy, it's hot in here. Maybe we want to open some windows?
Yeah. Good idea.
Morning, Fred.
Morning. Well, as you know, we worked with the planning department to construct an ordinance for the Hoppug Industrial Park overlay district. And as it stands now, the...it's almost done. There are a couple of policy and planning issues that need to be resolved, such as heights of buildings and what types of things might be subject to the site plan exemption procedure, if any. So these are policy and planning decisions that have to be worked out prior to finalizing the ordinance. So it's basically done, except a couple of these details need to be...
Is the planning department part of those discussions?
Yes.
Okay. And where are you on the height of the buildings?
We just need direction from the board and, you know...
So if I don't bring this up, I don't know to give you direction?
Well, I think it's the height is...take the...I've said it in the past. You take the outside perimeter that's close to residential, and you got to work your way into the middle and go higher. And I don't know what that number is. Frank's the planner, not me.
The main issue with the height had to do with the sanitary waste order.
Well, Suffolk County's working on that.
Right. So it should be somewhat commensurate with the ability for the development to handle that.
Well, we could do the height, and if they can't meet the criteria, then they have to come lower. But at least we're ready when they're done. We're not sitting there waiting, okay, Suffolk County, what are you going to give us?
What's the capacity? Do we know, Frank? Do we know what the capacity is? How much square footage could be added?
Well, the square footage depends upon what exactly you're doing. If you go up to fifty feet, which is what our...
Maybe you better come here so you can be heard?
Eddie, you can say. Grab Eddie's microphone. Always got Fred's. Okay.
Okay. The issue is, what do you do? If you go up to fifty feet, your principal expansion is going to be highly with regard to distribution centers or warehousing. Because the new systems that you have basically go up to about forty-five feet, according to our sources. And that will generate minimal with regard to impact, with regard to sewage treatment. And so our numbers with regard to the industrial park, it will not really significantly affect the numbers that we originally went with, with regard to the sewage treatment facility. You could also build multi-story office buildings up to fifty feet, possibly four stories. That's not going to be significant in terms of its impact because we basically allow for one-third of the industrial park to be office. When you go above fifty feet...
Right.
You are talking strictly office construction.
Right.
Okay? And the numbers start getting skewed. And at that point, there's just a lot of assumptions or a lot of unknown variables that you have to take into consideration. And because it's unknown, okay, it's going to be...that's going to be a particularly tough issue to go with. And you're possibly in the area of an environmental impact statement.
That is basically the difference that's going on downstairs, I think, in...or upstairs in the town attorney's office, is the difference between four stories or more. And it is the feeling of some members of the board that we should go up to six stories with parking inside the building.
But you sent a memo saying that if you went higher, that it would impact transportation, sewage, et cetera.
The...if I could just say this, the...this was supposed to get off the ground quickly. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, it hasn't. I'm not against height.
Right.
Okay. I...as far as I'm concerned, from a planner in the industrial park, even using what Councilman McCarthy has said about the proportions, that's not going to impact anything. What I am concerned about is, do we have the facilities to support this? And I could tell you at fifty feet, our numbers work out, and we could do this.
Okay. What do you define, if you have the facilities to support it, what does that mean?
That means, in terms of, if I'm asked to provide numbers with regard to sewage treatment and with numbers with regard to potential traffic generation with it, we know we have the capacities in the industrial park to handle this. Once you get beyond that, there's a number of variables that come into play that I cannot account for. In other words, we may exceed our capacity for what we're doing in that particular area. And in addition to that, because we're exceeding our capacity, we may trigger an environmental impact statement because of the density increases that we're going to. Remember, it's a change in philosophy. When we go above fifty feet, that means we're building office. Office means more traffic, more sewage, and the numbers become...the numbers start to go up rapidly after that particular point. Under fifty feet, there's no problem.
Because you said warehousing?
Well, the principal beneficiaries, and we have actually people waiting right now in the industrial park for this change, is for storage facilities. The new warehouses have storage facilities up to about forty-five feet. They're automated warehouses. And they...and so they could use this immediately. And storage facilities generate minimal traffic and minimal sewage usage. And that will be the immediate expansion that we will see in the park.
I'll ask a fairly dumb question. Why do you think it will be storage facilities and not office buildings or...
Because if somebody's going to do the investment, they're going to have to start thinking in terms of building parking garages and other things. And it's...for four stories, it's just not worth it.
That is part of the discussion, is parking garages, which would take a lot of that sewage out of it. There would be two floors, up to two floors of parking in the building. And we're talking about the future here. We're not talking about what we have right now. This is legislation to prepare for the future. The two Tritech buildings are how tall?
They're eighty-eight feet.
Eighty-eight feet, which is...
Well, they're about eight stories tall.
Eight stories tall.
But their sewage goes to Bergen Point, I would assume?
No, no. It goes actually to sewage treatment. Yeah. It was because of the Tritech buildings, by the way, that we...that generated the discussion to expand the sewage treatment facility in the park because they were the last into the door, and they were using up the remaining capacity that was on that particular site.
So if I understand that, if the building is remanded fifty feet, you will track storage facilities?
Principally modern warehouses.
If you go above that, then that usually will be an office kind of complex.
That's correct. Which I'm not against, by the way.
No. Okay. But can't you...can't we draw a happy medium here?
Well, my recommendation would be, because here's what the problem that we're going to face here. This is going to have to go for an environmental review. I could tell you right now, we could...you could adopt this, and I could discuss this with the environmental people, and there's no impact, significant impact on this, if we're going up to fifty feet. Once you go beyond that, then there are questions with regard to impact, and you...and you may be able to do it, but you also may trigger an environmental impact statement.
And if it did, it just delays the project.
That's correct.
I have heard you saying many, many times that we have an overabundance of storage facilities in this town. And we're not talking about storage facilities. We're talking about new businesses that would come to Hoppug. Pharmaceutical companies and research companies that would love to get into the Hoppug Industrial Park. And we're talking about the future, and the legislation is designed for the future.
But what...those companies, you think, go to high stories?
My...
I believe so.
There's nothing that precludes the town board from doing that in the near future. What I'm trying to say is, we could adopt this ordinance today.
Right.
And I think in the...I won't speak for Russ and DEW or the Conservation Advisory Board, but I think we could adopt that. And if the board wishes to pursue expanding and seeing how we could expand in height, I'm all supportive of that particular nature. What I'm concerned about is, we're packaging this thing with questions that are going to delay it from being enacted. This ordinance is supposed to be...was intended to be adopted relatively quickly. When we recommended, this was a year and a half ago. And by adding things on to it...
Well, what you...wait a minute. What you recommended a year and a half ago was along Motor Parkway.
Along Motor Parkway, but then when we had discussions with the HIA, they were the ones that explained to me that the real issue was the warehousing. And I said, okay, let's deal with the whole park as a blanket. Let's give them fifty feet right now. And we did...we ran the numbers. We know what the capacities are. We feel that it's going to have no significant impact. I'm all for exploring and supporting additional height. I think it would be advantageous. I think it's also advantageous to support with Councilman Creighton says is more research and development and whatever. But those, if you start to go to multi-story buildings, you need to have the appropriate sewage capacity and the appropriate infrastructure.
Okay. But why can't that be figured out based on the sewage capacity?
Because...
And let me give a dumb example. So we'll allow three buildings to go to eighty feet or ninety feet, and ten buildings at fifty feet. Why can't you draw some kind of medium?
We're talking about, when you do an analysis here, you're talking about basically fifteen-hundred acres.
Right.
And you have to make certain assumptions with regard to the numbers. There's a proportion for offices, there's a proportion for warehousing, and so forth. When you start changing a variable and you know the direction is, let's say, go above fifty feet, and you know the direction is office, your numbers start to change radically. And now your assumptions could be questioned. And what I mean by could be questioned is, those are the kind of things that automatically foster an...I...my big fear is, it's not so much the compromise in the numbers, but my concern is, is that we will engender an environmental impact statement quickly because we're working with those numbers. And what I'm trying to encourage from a strategic point of view is, adopt what you know is right now, and if you wish to pursue the height requirement, and again, I'm supporting that, let's work on that and see what that...those numbers work out to be. And that may take a while to do that because we may question the...how we statistically come up with those numbers.
What if the town board adopted it at the current proposition? And then it filled up, which would then obviate some of the taller buildings that they're referring to?
Well, right now, if somebody wanted to build a taller building, there's a process called the variance process, which Tritech went through, our three investors went through, Marcus went through, and so on and so forth. So there's a relief valve if somebody comes along with something that we really, really like. Okay? So if we want to do that, we could do that. So there's nothing that prevents that. And we have been supportive of those kind of things. But what I'm looking at here is how we treat a large area of the town. And when you develop regulations, you have to...you have to come up with certain assumptions on how everything will behave. And what you would charge the planning department to do is to tell you, is it feasible to do this? Is it not feasible to do this? And I'm saying, basically, we feel very comfortable in saying fifty feet is doable without any problem. I don't want to say without any problems, but virtually the problems are minor. Once you go beyond that, we have to then do an analysis, which will be a lot more complicated. And I'm willing to do that. It's just that that takes time to put those numbers together. And I'm trying to get a lot of ordinances out. I don't have...
So let me interrupt you. So let me get...I'm sorry. Go back to what I had said just a minute or two ago. So if you adopted the ordinance and you got applications for this warehousing, it's also possible that you may get applications for taller office buildings.
That's correct. Mm-hmm. And if they are above fifty?
No, but then I'm finished. Now, if there were some applications, would that trigger environmental impact statement?
The office buildings would not unless they had something unusual on it. Tritech did trigger an environmental impact statement because of its sheer size. I mean, we're talking about very large office buildings, and that was an environmental impact statement. But our three investors, which is right down the street, which is also a very large office building, it's around one-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet, did not. So the...what I'm getting at, there are thresholds at which you know that you raise questions on. And what I'm...I guess I'm not being clear about is that there's no...I don't want to say no problems. There's more smaller problems at fifty feet. And once you go beyond that, we have to sit down and study that. And I'm willing to do that, but that is going to take time.
Okay.
Why can't you write into the code eighty feet if your first three stories are parking garages? And then...
Isn't that what you're doing, Fred? Isn't the parking included in the...
So I mean, so that's what I would do. You know, if you're not...if you're not going to do parking garages, then you're fifty. But if you're going to need parking garages for your site, they don't...parking garages don't use sewage calculation.
What we are...the numbers that we're working with right now, just in broad numbers, are using the same percentages and distributions that we currently have of uses. Certain percentage of office, certain percentage of manufacturing, certain percentage of warehouse and distribution. And we're keeping that with the fifty feet. We don't think it's going to significantly change. When you go up above fifty feet, what happens is, that is only good for office. It is not good for anything else. So your numbers are going to change significantly once you go above fifty feet.
The numbers of what?
Or your sewage and traffic counts are going to change significantly because that's...you're changing the distribution.
And that's what triggers the impact statement?
And that...well, I'm...I can't say...
Right, okay.
That's really DEW's call. But we think, from a planner's point of view, when we look at the numbers and what we're attempting to do here, the percentage of how the proportions are between office, manufacturing, warehouse will not change if we bring it to fifty feet. We feel that's pretty solid. In other words, the numbers will not...will trigger anything.
But you still need places for these people to park. So you're going to need a parking calculation in that content of ordinance, which should be your first three floors. Allow it to go to eighty so people can park, because if they can't make the calculation, then they can't go up.
We're willing...
Can I interrupt if I'm...
Sure.
I asked Fred the question. Is that included in your proposed legislation, the parking?
Well, there's provision for parking, but there's no...
Within the building?
Yeah. There's no increase that comes as a result of parking, per se. Right now, there's a height limit and a story limit.
It doesn't even have to be within the building. It can be next to the building, and it's just...
It could be next to it, or it could be in the building. But...
It shouldn't count against...
But that is part of your work product right now. And you, Frank, have sent over your work product saying it should be fifty feet, correct?
Yes.
All right. So it seems to me that we're down to, we have to get the answer from the town attorney's office on the mixture of the proposal that we made and the mixture of the proposal that Frank made, and we...ours includes parking?
Well, I think it's simple. You know on a fifty-foot building what your parking calculation will be. It's in the town code right now. And if that don't fit on the current sites that you have, then you're going to have to basically have an...
If you have a ware...let's go. If you have a warehouse building at fifty feet, it's the same as if it was at thirty-five feet. In other words, the number of employees did not increase. These are automated warehouses, so they can go up fifty feet, and the number of employees and the number of parking remains the same, so they could utilize existing buildings. And that's what we have. We actually physically have applicants waiting right now to exactly do that. So we think you're not going to see any change with regard in either traffic or employees because of these particular warehouses. Now, take a look at the distribution that we will have for offices. What we currently allow with what our percentage is, is you could build anywhere from two to three stories, depending upon how you do it, with the thirty-five feet. With going to fifty feet, you're talking about a fourth story. That's a twenty-five percent increase for just one user. That is, when you consider that they're about a third of the park, that's not significant in terms of their numbers, either in terms of sewage usage or regard to traffic generation. So what we're saying with that is that the numbers are very low. Now you say you want to build more offices, and I'm with you on building more offices. Those are the highest tax ratables we could go with, and they're certainly desirable. And the more we could build, the better we could build. But each of those, when you build an office like we did with Tritech, and Tritech was one that I was working on for a very long time, when it was European American Bank and before that. And because the numbers on that were so high, it triggered in and by itself, a single site in and by itself, triggered an environmental impact statement, and we had to do that. And that delayed that project for about two years before it was built. What I don't want to do is delay this any further with regard to that. I'm willing to, if I can get...if I can convince the environmental people to have this adopted now, and then later modify the code as we see fit and expand the industrial park to as large as we can make it. I think that's the strategy I would like to do. But to do it in the segments where we could have this, but I...my fear is, is that we're going to...we're going to, by putting this above fifty feet, I think we're in the area of an environmental impact statement, and we're going to delay this. Or we're going to be going through numbers for the next year, trying to justify it back and forth.
Well, our, our middle name is delay. So I think what we ought to do is get past this, get the re, get the response from the town attorney's office, whatever that package is, bring it to the board, and then get it started.
I don't know about delay because I, I brought this up two, a month ago or two. Why was it in the town attorney's office? I didn't get significant answers. I put it back on for today, specifically because this overlay district is in the process for a year, and there is a delay. Once again, I don't know, I'm, if there were a mix of this use, does it still project a environmental impact statement? If there were one eight-story building, would that project the?
No, no.
So then why can't we come up with a mix here?
No, because you're dealing with, you're basically fifteen hundred acres. And what you're asking from a planning number of point of view is, we have to, it's not one building that we have to deal with.
No, I understand.
We have to deal with fifteen hundred acres. And when you deal with those in raw numbers, those are very, you have forty thousand employees. They're plus or minus in the industrial park right now. That's at the current density that you're working with. So we're expanding in a certain percentage, whatever that is. And we don't think it's going to change significantly, whatever that amount of employees and whatever that's going to be there. What we think is going to happen is, it's going to be basically aiding the distribution centers immediately. I'm also for increasing the office space, but when you do that now, how many people do you expect to go in there? That correlates to sewage treatment, and it correlates to traffic that's being generated. We are currently, we just finished off with a traffic study that the feds paid for in the industrial park that basically showed that at peak, right now at peak hour times, our road, the industrial park is fine interior, in the interior with regard to traffic at peak hour, but all of the peripheral exits, with the exception of, I believe, sunken, uh, the Northern State entrance, is at or above capacity. So we start off with a limitation immediately when we know about density. And so I have to respond, you know, to you and tell you if we have sufficient capacity there. What we have to, what I, what I'm trying to do is proportion this increase to what we know we could get away with, and then go beyond that. It was never my intent for this ordinance to be a one-shot deal. I expect us to revisit it and come back and make changes and, and gradually expand it, as opposed to making it a one-shot deal. So I'm not against what Councilman McCarthy or Councilman Creighton or any of the board members are interested in. I would like to do that. But I'm concerned about the timing. If you want to get this done quickly and it's ready to go now, let's do it that way with the fifty feet. If somebody wants to build sixty feet or seventy feet, go for a variance, you know, and we'll support it. I have no problem with that. And then we'll do the study to see if we can have the capacity for the park. But, you know, those are the kind of things we have to come up with.
But if people go for the variance, your FAR is going to hurt them, so they have to go for that. Your parking is going to hurt them, they have to go for that. We have to have some component in there for parking garages that they don't have to go for a variance, you know?
I have said, and I think the, uh, the, we've been consistent with this. Nobody in the industrial park has ever heard, you know, with regard to FAR or variances or things like, like that. You know, on outside of yes, but in the industrial park, we have a different rule. The things that we're concerned with the industrial park is making sure that the site has sufficient parking. I don't know of anybody who's been turned down for a, a parking.
But that's at three stories. Now you start going up, your parking calculations.
And build a parking garage or build whatever. You, we know for a fact, and we're in conversations with the, the big developers like Tritech, Bill Coglin, and others. And what I'm trying to figure out from them is, on these large office buildings, what is our real parking requirement that we have to, have to meet? And we're, we're going through numbers, like for a hundred thousand square foot buildings of somewhere between four and five per thousand. Okay? And that's what they absolutely minimally need. Now, our ordinance is a little bit more than that, but maybe we can make adjustments for that. And those are the kind of things that we are looking at with regard to these larger office buildings. And I'm willing to examine that. What's also included in this particular code is the ability to allow parking lots to be merged so that we could have credits for, between two sites, so that you could build bigger buildings. Because the larger the parking areas, the more you could, you could, the less demand that you need per square foot because it sort of balances out. There's different peak usages, there's different types of demands between buildings. So you can lower the parking requirements for that. So we are looking at strategies that could effectively increase density with regard to these areas, and that could work.
I'm going to ask a fairly dumb question. We adopted this ordinance and, um, some applicants came in for higher, um, buildings, and they would need variances, as you said. Is there a way that we can fast-track the variance?
Right now, the waiting list for a variance before the board's zoning appeals is five weeks.
Well, but we're trying to get an ordinance here that accommodates many things, taller buildings, fifty-foot buildings, storage.
What I'm saying is, if you're, if you're going to build a building that is that big, and you're in the private sector, and Councilman McCarthy, you, you've worked in the private sector, so you know this. The lead time on those buildings are like two years. So a variance is not going, you know, is not going to impact.
Impact, okay.
Those particular type of buildings. Those, they have a very long lead time in terms of what they're working with. So I don't see that being, causing a delay.
Fred, are we at an?
How, how far are we from the finalization of that ordinance?
We're ninety-five percent. We just.
Can we get that?
Resolve the issue with the, the height and whether any items can be, um, put through the cycling exemption procedure.
Well, that, that's a second.
Have any of you met with DEW at all? Have you met with DEW at all? Are you talking regarding a secret or it's an environmental impact statement? Have we discussed this at all with them?
I had a phone, uh, two phone conversations with Russ, and I gave, I sent him a draft of the ordinance.
Has he responded to the draft?
No, he said he wants to, he wants to respond to the final. That's.
Well, the fin, his, I would think, members of the board, I think his middle, right now, response would be good because that's going to help them finish the final draft. So it's not him coming to the end and Russ saying, well, no, no, this is no good, that's no good, that's no good. Take what he's got right now, and at least give a response to it, Russ should, to us, to Fred and Frank.
Well, the, the problem with that is, I think there's three members of the board who don't agree that it should be four stories. That's part of it. That's exactly what he's saying, right?
Three members of what board that don't want it four stories? I don't understand.
I said there are three members of the board who don't agree that it should only be four stories tall.
Well, we'd all like it taller, but if it triggers an environmental impact statement.
If we, if we prepare the code so that we can discuss it, then we should act upon it. Either turn it down or make whatever final changes we have to make.
I think with.
We should get the final product as close or what is the finished product now.
I think what Frank said is, is a good idea, realistically. Get as much as you can without triggering environmental impact statement. Because otherwise, if you don't, it's going to be.
We don't know if it's going to trigger environmental.
Well, that's why you need Russ in the equation. That's why I said we should have his input into this as it's going along.
Part of, this is, you know, just so you understand, this is not like what Russ's opinion is going to be. What is going to happen is Russ is going to ask me questions with regard to impact. And then I have to answer him in terms of numbers. Okay? That's, it's a dialogue.
So why don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
That's what.
And then when you get an answer, we'll come back here in another week or two and, and put it on the table again.
We're going to have a final stage where Russ has no input, then he's going to take it across the street and have it for six months, but looking at it. He should have been in, in loop all along.
Okay.
Is that a good suggestion?
Yes.
Well, let's do that.
Okay, I'll speak to Russ.
Okay. Um. We have a contract negotiation, it's going to be executive session along with that. I do want to speak to something that bothers the hell out of me, and this, it's called IQ2M. It's just, it's, there is no flexibility here for anybody to propose a resolution without having it go through so many sources. I don't, in the past, councilmen or supervisor would propose a resolution based on a request, usually from a department head. Resolution would be prepared, it would be given to each town board member. If they needed an attorney input, that would be gotten prior to going down to the board. This is IQ2M, and every one of us has this folder. This was supposed to eliminate paperwork, make the process simpler. Now, a couple of weeks ago, there were two promotions that were not on the agenda. Mr. Wareheim had them. He went away. I tried to put them on, and it turns out I'm rejecting somebody else's work. It makes no sense to me. This process is so cumbersome. Uh, I'm going, I'm going back to the old way with my, my resolutions. This doesn't work for me. Just doesn't work. Bob, you even, I said, um, yesterday about the other whatever. And, and then something happens, uh, somebody gets skipped on it.
I was skipped. I was taken out of it.
Yeah. Well, how does that happen?
I don't know how that happened.
Yeah, I don't know either.
It says per Patrick Vecchio.
Yeah, well.
That's what it said.
Well, I don't skip. I don't even know how it works. So.
Somehow it got.
Just like Ed Wareham said to me.
My name was taken out.
I rejected resolutions. I don't reject resolutions. It's system, it's cumbersome, convoluted, and difficult, certainly for me. And it causes this kind of anguish that somebody's taken out of the loop. If a person gets the resolution, no matter where it comes from, it should be acted upon. It doesn't get acted upon.
Well, in that situation, I had reached out to you the third time. I finally got you. But I had been taken out of that routing prior to the third time when I spoke to you.
But I think, and I don't know the answer to that question, that people get taken out of the routing because somebody else is putting it on. It's a, it's a dumb process, and I, I would be just as offended as you are. But if I put a resolution on that you're the liaison to, you may be taken out of the routing. Why should I be prohibited from putting a resolution?
See, I don't mind being, if someone takes me out of the routing, I don't have a problem with that because it's a five-member board. And it take, all it does, taking it out of the routing, all it does is put it on the agenda. Then it comes to the five of us, then you vote yes or no.
Yeah, but when you're discussing the matter, or trying to discuss it, you shouldn't be taken out of the routing.
I know, I'm talking about, not, but you're talking, I'm talking about just miscellaneous stuff. Because, you know, you have a deadline to meet, and there's certain people haven't had it done. So you skip over that particular person in order to get it onto the agenda.
Just let me give you an example. I just pulled this one. It gets triggered by Jorgensen, I guess, agreement for pellet patch distribution. Jorgensen apparently puts it in, goes to the town attorney. From town attorney goes to Mr. Malloy. From Mr. Malloy, it says forward to the supervisor. Under the supervisor says Patrick Vecchio pending, town board pending. How does this all happen? It makes no sense. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, there could be some clarifications done in the system. I think Mr. Martin from that system could, should come in because we just paid for an upgrade two meetings ago of the system. And that's why I had asked Vinnie to come and tell us what he was doing. I think there can be some clarifications in there. I think all five board members should be on every resolution. As long as one, as soon as one approves it, then it goes, it gets to, it goes to the table. Not one member should have the right to reject something unanimously.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. Okay. Anybody got anything else?
I do.
Go ahead.
When we're speaking of delay, the winery on Edgewood Avenue, the owners are getting ready to leave town.
Okay.
Okay? Which means we will have possibly a construction of multiple housing there.
But what was the delay? Who made the delay?
I don't know what's going on.
The delay was a, a request by the attorney to withdraw it from the agenda.
Because a new matter was brought up by the planning board.
Has, had to do with state regulations, which the state should be addressing. We followed the ordinances of the East End to put in their wineries, which was passed by the state. And now we can't put a winery in Smithtown.
I don't think anybody on this board's objective to it.
Nobody.
No, I don't. But I think we have to ask Frank to come up with this, because Frank is.
Because the owners have cut, you know, they're going to go.
But every.
There are, there are three owners there, I think. Two women and one man. The man wants this winery in a worse way. It's his labor of love, if you will.
Well, everybody here so far has voted unanimously to do it, so I don't know.
Exactly.
What, all of a sudden it glitches.
But there was a hearing.
Right.
The attorney for the applicant got up and said, I'd like you to postpone this. That's all I know.
And it's on for Thursday, the, the second Thursday is the last meeting in the month, so April.
So what's the problem?
What was the issue, Frank?
Okay. Essentially, we have a special exception, which this board adopted, and you're right, Councilman McCarthy unanimously. And it, in that special exception, it outlines the steps and the procedures for how you obtain the, the permit. Prior to the public hearing, the, uh, we had contacted the applicant after they had made an application for the winery events and said that there was a element missing from their application. And that particular section had to do with the fact that you have to give us a generic description of the types of events that you will have, and give us your layout or propose, like where the tents will be, and so on and so forth. The applicant then, or the applicant's attorney, uh, then explained to us that he felt that he was exempt, or his applicant, his client was exempt from this because they were in an agricultural district. And agricultural districts under the state of New York have certain protections that are granted to them. We then did some quick, this all happened like within two to three days before the public hearing. We then did some research with regard to this. And there are some.
What, in regard to whether they fall within the agricultural district?
And whether they do have protections for winery events. And the answer is, they are within the agricultural district. And there are some, uh, they are allowed to have certain events on their particular site, including weddings and the like. However, what caused the delay, there was a phrase or a limitation that was placed into those guidelines which we were debating back and forth.
Whose guidelines? The states or?
The states. The agricultural markets law. I'll give you a copy of it after the meeting. So you can see what the section is. And I'll give, I'll give it to the entire board so you can see what the section is. And we were, there was a provision in there that basically says that they're allowed to do this, but they have these limitations. And it was those limitations that we were debating before the public meeting.
You have to be a little more clear. They're allowed to do this. What is this?
They're allowed to have events. They're allowed to have weddings.
But we gave them permission to have the events already.
No, 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 that's a special exception.
All right, so go ahead.
Okay. So we were debating what the state regulations mean. And we felt mutually, I think it was between us and the applicant, that we should not do this at a public hearing because we were just finding out the information ourselves as to what the nature of the agricultural markets law meant. So what we did was, the applicant requested it in German. We mutually agreed to that because it would have, we do have people who are concerned about this particular application on Edgewood Avenue. And it would have only been chaotic if we were debating among ourselves what the meaning of the law was. So we have, uh, basically have, well, we, both of us are the, and.
Both being who?
Uh, the applicant and the town attorney have scheduled a meeting for Friday to go over the.
It's coming Friday?
It's coming Friday to go over this matter. What we also have done is contact the people at Agri, uh, Agriculture, who enforce this law, agricultural markets law. And they already have a copy of, we found out they already have a copy of our law. And we have reason to believe that, uh, based upon conversations with a number of people who are in the field, that our law basically passes mustard with regard to regulating winery events. And it, and it can be used within the agricultural district concept. In other words, the town does have the ability to apply the special exception. What we are waiting for is just, there's a couple of sections of, that are unclear about our code to review. But basically ninety percent of our code, we believe, is, is, is applicable. So what we intended, have this matter resolved by our meeting on Friday. And what we hope to do, because the town attorney has been working with us on this, is we will, at the end of that particular meeting on Friday, determine what we feel the, the nature of the agricultural markets law provisions allow us to regulate. And hopefully, the applicant will agree with that, or at least the applicant will articulate in his own way, or their own way, what they feel the differences are. And we'll go to the public hearing on that particular basis.
Frank, is, is one of the matters that we asked about, did we ask them to share their records, their financial records with us after each event?
Uh, well, you could do that. I don't want to get to that.
Well, I saw that in the paper. That was your comment.
Why would you do that?
No, no. Well, because the limitation, if you look at the agricultural markets law, you're allowed to hold the event if the primary purpose of that event is to sell the, the wine that you would have. The only, and it says in the, the regulation itself that you must keep detailed records about this, those sales. So in order to validate that that is conforming to the agricultural markets law, we would want to see those records.
Would those records not be submitted to the Department of Agriculture and Marketing?
They are subject to.
The state of New York?
No, they, they are subject to.
They are no business of the town of Smithtown.
Well, I, I beg to differ with you, Councilman, because if we are going to regulate, uh, these events, we have, and we are told that we have limitations on them because of the agricultural markets law. agricultural markets law, we have a right to know that they are conforming to the state law with the exemption. And, you know, if, if, you know, the winery, and we already did calculations on how many bottles of wine that could be produced on that particular site, and if they have to have a certain number of events, there's only so much wine you could sell within a given year. So, you know, and if that's, if that's the limitation on how many events you could have, then we have to see that.
And there's, are wineries out east conform with that?
Well, actually, as a matter of fact, this is where we, we spent a lot of time discussing with the attorneys that are out east, with regard to the town attorneys, actually, with regard to this matter. This is an issue that comes up a lot.
Then, but...
Pat, if they did conform to them, they'd be out of business.
Yeah. So let me ask this. The town board, special exception, we approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it his obligation to conform with the agricultural law?
Okay, no, here's, no, we're not inter, maybe you're misunderstanding...
They want to go around the special exception part of it.
That's what Council McCarthy is going...
And use the agricultural law instead.
Right.
I don't see anybody on this board that's going to vote against the special exception, so I don't know why they just don't go with the special exception hearing, be heard, and let the board vote it.
That, that's it.
And then if you, we did that, they'd get their winery.
That's it. Councilman McCarthy just authorized it.
And then we'd get their winery.
Yeah.
So, there you go, Mr. Malloy.
They decided they wanted to go with the agricultural law. There's no one on this board, we made this ordinance, we're around with provisions, there's no reason to...
I don't think they raised the issue of the agricultural law. They didn't raise it.
No, I'm saying, but, no, Vinnie...
Yes, they did.
Yes, that's one of the reasons he wanted to do it the other way.
We didn't, we didn't raise it, they did. What came about was, you have a provision in your ordinance, which is supposed to be, and we just discussed this, it was generic, that the applicant has. What we want to see is a generic plan, where are you going to have your tents, where are you going to have your parking, so that the residents can see that, you know, all the events will be in this particular area in this particular way, and there'll be no more than X number of people on the site, and so on and so on.
But I thought that was all worked out.
That was everything done a year and a half ago, with Mrs. Gallagher and everybody.
Yes, no, but it's...
It was done.
It's done.
So you're saying if the town, if the attorney didn't bring up this agricultural law, this thing would go forward?
Well, what we were missing was that part of the application. It's in the special exception that they have to submit that plan to us, where the event is going to be held and how it's going to be done. We don't have that in the file, and we don't, and that's part of our law. All I'm looking for in that is to say, okay, give us the maximum-sized tent you're going to have on the property, that where the parking's going to be, where you think the dance floor is going to be, and that's what we're going to hold you to in terms of those...
That's how we made the law.
Didn't we set up the law that way?
Exactly.
Yeah, we did.
Exactly, we did. So why are we asking them now?